Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining me tonight on Spanning the Need. I'm your host, Anthony Spano. Tonight, we're going to talk about life politics in the county during these difficult times. To do that, we have the Chair of the Mahoney County Commissioners, Commissioner Dave Ditzler. Dave, thank you for joining me tonight.
Thank you, Tony. Appreciate you asking me to be on and I'm happy to do it.
Not a problem. How is, how are you doing? I know you're, you've got a lot of different moving parts.
Yeah, it's definitely a hectic time right now. I mean, between, you know, the COVID, the pandemic, the, uh, the election going on, just trying to keep up and make sure that all the residents of Mahoney County are, are getting the services they need and trying to keep up with, uh, you know, the COVID, the CARES dollars coming in and trying to distribute them, you know, in a manner that best serves the residents of Mahoney County. So just so much has been going on. It's, uh, it's really been a hectic time. You know, you really have to draw on all of our staff and our support staff and our other elected officials. And, you know, everybody's been doing an amazing job working together.
Yeah, and we'll get into a little bit of that or what you guys have been doing behind the scenes and, and what's really happening. Dave, not many people may or may not know you, but tell a little bit about yourself, how you got started in public service and kind of up to where we are today.
Well, uh, it's kind of a strange story. I'm 62 years old. I graduated from Austintown Fitch in 1976. Out of high school, I actually started going to Y S U and pre-law. And I got, a bunch of us in high school in our, in June of our senior year, we heard that they were hiring in the Camel Works at Youngstown Sheet and Tube. And we chose to all blow off a day of school and drive down and fill out applications, all of us who were 18 years old. So we went down and filled them out and I graduated in June, started to go to Y S U. And then before the year ended, I got called from Youngstown Sheet and Tube to go start working in the Seamless Hot Mill. Well, at the time I was working for a dollar sixty-five an hour, uh, minimum wage.
Wow.
At Cornersburg Pizza in Cornersburg. And they called me to come to work at Youngstown Sheet and Tube, making five dollars an hour. So it was like dying and going to heaven. I thought, well, you know, I'll go to Y S U, I'll go to night school, I'll start working, make money. And back then, you know, you could literally pay your way through college. You know, it was about eighteen dollars a quarter hour, you know? So if you took full-time hours, you could go to a quarter for like $240. It was for a quarter of, uh, of Y S U. So I started to go to Y S U, started to work at Youngstown Sheet and Tube. And, you know, I was working three turns and going to school at night. And every third week I tried to trade turns, you know, to get on a day turn or midnight. Uh, I started working steady midnights while I went to school. And, and I actually was going for pre-law. And I spent about three years going to night school in, uh, pre-law. And then, uh, long story short, I got, uh, promoted to a hot mill expediter or whatever in parts. They asked me to go into sales. I started going through some sales training. So they, uh, I got a Youngstown Sheet and Tube Employee Scholarship. Uh, and I ended up finishing a business degree, uh, in accounting and economics. And, uh, and ended up going into, uh, well, I was going into the sales program at Youngstown Sheet and Tube. And that, uh, was after Black Monday, where a lot of the people, uh, 20,000 people lost their jobs. And the only department left still running at Youngstown Sheet and Tube was the Seamless Hot Mill. So I continued to work in the Seamless Hot Mill because the union contract that I was in, uh, had a consent decree in it that you had department seniority if you were hired in, in a specific department. And my department kept working and I literally worked from seventy-six to nineteen eighty-three there until they idled the plant and shut down. So at that time, um, I finished my college degree. I ended up going to work for a company in Warren, Ohio called Thomas Steel. I worked my way through Thomas Steel. I started out really as a, as a process engineer there. And I worked for a couple of years until I got into, uh, the sales end of it. And when I left there, I was the Director of Sales, managing a division of about fifty million dollars in sales over about 23 people. And, uh, my specific responsibility was predominantly selling brass to the ammunition industry. So my customers were Winchester, Federal, Remington. I had a couple of other large customers that were Texas Instruments, Garlock Bearing. And, uh, you know, so it ended up being quite a career. I, I left there, uh, when I was still trustee in Austintown and went to a competitor of ours in Chicago, a company called American Nickeloid. And I was hired as the Global Manager of Sales there. Collectively, I negotiated contracts with probably a dozen Fortune 500 companies. Uh, when I was in Thomas Steel, I was, we were based out of Europe. Uh, so our, our headquarters was in Dusseldorf, Germany, and I'm Moiden, Holland. So I was in Europe quite a bit. I was in Asia quite a bit, uh, negotiating contracts with Texas Instruments in Belgium and in Korea. Uh, so, uh, I got a great opportunity to travel and, you know, go abroad and, uh, get a very good feeling for cultures in other countries and, you know, and as well as throughout, you know, most every state in the United States. So it, uh, it really gave me a lot of good opportunities.
Any regrets not going into law school?
No, not really, you know, because, uh, the funny thing was is that when, um, when I was finishing, um, when I was finishing school, a lot of my friends that were, um, that were going to law school, that actually completed, completed law school, um, they, they, a couple of them are, that actually completed pre-law, they got their undergraduate. And, uh, they were doing different things, trying to get jobs. And they were working as probation officers and, you know, they were starting out making like eighty-five hundred dollars a year in the, in the probation officer field. And, you know, and I thought with a pre-law degree, you know, it's going to be pretty difficult if I don't go to law school and finish and pass the bar to be able to make a decent living. And, you know, it was, it was kind of in our blood, you know? We, uh, you know, we were steel town back in the seventies and back then it was, uh, was booming. So, uh, you know, I made a great living for a lot of years and, uh, got to do things that, you know, I couldn't have ever been able to do on my own. Um, my wife, I built so many miles up flying that I would fly my wife over to Europe free, uh, while I was already there for work. And we would get an opportunity to spend, you know, a week in Venice, a week in Germany, a week in the Netherlands, a week in Paris.
Making me jealous.
And the only thing it cost us was our food and our hotel. And, you know, so to be able to spend a week in Paris for less than a thousand dollars is, you know, pretty amazing because I was already there. My wife flew for free and, you know, and when I flew back, I already had my ticket. So, you know, it was, it was a great, it was a great learning experience and, uh, really opened my eyes to the world because prior to that, I, I really was never one that wanted to go on vacation. You know, my thought process was pretty functional that why would I spend a thousand dollars on a vacation when I could buy a couch that'd last 10 years? You know, so.
That's a different thought process. That's, I think like that sometimes.
Those were, you know, the way, the way that I thought. And, uh, but once I got over to Europe and was doing things that, you know, that most people don't get an opportunity to do, I, I'd be over there and I, I thought, you know, geez, it'd be nice if I, if my wife was with me to be able to share this, you know? So it really changed my outlook on things.
Well, so now you're, you're doing all that, you're traveling, you're at work. Have you lived in Austintown, you're pretty much your whole entire life?
Yes, I, I was born on Bainbridge in Austintown. And, uh, my family moved to Ayrshire by way of Lexington Place. Um, you know, once, one stop in between while they were building a house on Ayrshire. And, uh, then when, when I was 18 years old, I moved out and moved into Westchester Square Apartments and lived in Westchester Square, bought a house on Berkey.
Everyone has lived in Westchester somehow, shape or form.
I'm telling you, I'm telling you, yeah. How true. I, I, I gutted a house on Berkey and, you know, moved in there and, uh, bought a piece of property on New Road against Meander. Actually, I bought a piece of property in 1986 for nine thousand dollars, three acres.
Oh, wow.
And, uh, it happened to be on the railroad tracks, uh, which is now the bike path. So, um, my, I really didn't have a, um, you know, an inkling to golf or things like that. Played a lot of softball, played a lot of baseball. And, uh, but I pounded nails, you know, for my, my recreation. So I built the house myself here on Berkey or on New Road against Meander. And it took me three years to finish it and move into it. And my wife and I have been here for 30 years.
Uh, yeah, that's a long time and that's good. I mean, you, you know how to do those types of things around the house. Every, every wife would be happy to have a man like that.
Well, you know what's funny? My wife and I don't have any kids and, um, you know, and I added a suite on the back of the house, uh, an in-law suite for her father to move into. And he passed, then I built a three-car garage with two stories. Uh, and, you know, so she asked me, am I finished pounding nails yet? Because there's two of us and I've added on to the house three times, you know, since, uh, you know, there's only two of us here. And so I, my response to her is always, I have one more project left in me. And that's Extreme Tree Fort. Cause I live in the woods and I figured if you've watched that show, you gotta, gotta want an Extreme Tree Fort next to your house.
Well, or a man cave, man tree fort, whatever, whatever works.
Yep, that's true, that's true.
So, so let's go to the next step. Now Austintown trustee. So how did that come about?
Well, that's, that's kind of a, you know, by chance story because back in the eighties, I was looking for property in Youngstown. Uh, I was, you know, I really was just looking for a wooded lot to build an A-frame in. And, um, so there would have been an opportunity to move to Youngstown if I would have actually bought a piece of property down in De Camp that I was looking at that you accessed off of, uh, off of De Camp or off of, not Campford Road, but, uh, hmm, what's the one that comes right back up that, that, um?
Is that, you talking about Shenley?
Shenley, exactly. I'm sorry, Shenley, yeah. And, uh, so anyway, I, I ended up, uh, I ended up, you know, buying the property I did, uh, building my house. And my father had actually run for trustee in Austintown uh, once in the sixties and once in the seventies. And, uh, never was successful at it. Um, but he always had this plan that he threw out there that, that there was a lot of areas that flooded in Austintown. And he always wanted to implement when he was running a 10-year plan that, you know, corrected some of the flooding problems. And, you know, my dad was one of those guys that had a lot of patience and, you know, and thought things out and said, you know, uh, one of his lines was, you know, how do you eat an elephant, you know, one bite at a time? You know, you've got to get started, you know, you've got to start and implement a plan to get to the end. If you don't get started, you'll never accomplish it. So anyway, my dad passed in 91. And, uh, in 93, 93, Jenny and I, my wife got married. And in June of 93, uh, we had a, a large rain, the hundred-year rain in Austintown. Uh, and my mother's house flooded, sanitary backup. So when I went to try and help her, I found some of the old literature that my father had made when he ran for trustee, literally floating in the water in our basement.
Oh, wow.
So I thought to myself, it's a good time for me to go to my first Township Trustees Meeting. So I took the piece of literature that talked about, you know, fixing flooding problems. And they were from 15 or 20 years earlier that my dad had had those written. And they included our house in the area that had been flooded. So I went to a trustees meeting and needless to say, at the time, there'd been a lot of water issues, so there were quite a few people there. And when I got up and spoke, you know, I had one of the trustees, I'll, you know, won't repeat their name, but, uh, one of them told me that if you think you could do a better job, run for office and fix it yourself. So that's what I did. I, um, I literally ran for trustee because they made me mad at the trustees meeting. And when I came home in June, uh, and I said to my wife, I'm going to run for Township Trustee in Austintown. She said, great, what's that? And she was, she was from Youngstown, you know, and she, you know, seen the mayor of city council. And, and, uh, so literally, uh, there, it was two weeks before the filing deadline ended uh, for two trustees to elect, uh, in Austintown. And, and Jenny and I went out walking door to door, got petitions signed. And, uh, I walked door to door to probably 7,000 homes between, you know, the end of July and the November election. And, uh, Bo Pritchard and myself were elected in, uh, November of 93. And then that's how I became a Township trustee. And basically the, the first thing I did was sit down with Mike Bertilacki, who was a road superintendent and said, you know, do we keep a log of all the calls of people that get water problems? And he said, yes, we absolutely do. So we, we sat there one night in the office, in the road superintendent's office with a, a map of Austintown that really encompassed the whole wall. And we started going through the addresses on the calls that had water problems and putting little post pins onto the map to log all of the different addresses of the calls that we got. Uh, we sat down and looked at it and saw where all the clusters were. And, you know, we decided to hire Thomas Folk and Associates to, you know, look for, uh, ways to rectify the plant, uh, the problems in each of those areas. And, uh, we took and started working on the ones that we could, uh, we could fund ourselves, areas where we could, you know, uh, partner with different comp, different places to, that we, where we needed land. Uh, one of the first ones we did was we built a retention site uh, where the old TB Sanitarium was, uh, where the water tower is now, uh, back behind those areas. So back then, you know, you didn't have the subdivision that's there now uh, where the homes are. And we were able to utilize the property that the county allowed us to use to build retention. Uh, we partnered with the Youngstown Catholic Diocese and, uh, and got property by Immaculate Heart of Mary. Uh, we got property over by Resurrection Cemetery. Um, and we started building retention ponds in areas to hold the water back. Um, then we applied for every grant that we could, CDBG grants through the county. Uh, back then it was David Engler, Ed Reese, and Frank Lorty. And, uh, I would take them on, yeah. I would take them on walks through all those areas and show them where the flooding problems were happening and where the opportunity to eliminate the flooding was and through. And we got funded every year for 10 years on, on community development block grants to help us, help ourselves, you know, to eliminate some of the areas that had a lot of water problems.
What are, what are the, I want to go back to this statement that someone said about, if you think you can do better than me, run. And normally, and normal, it's what, one out of 50 or 100 people that you would say that to would actually run?
Well, I guess, you know, um, in my younger days, I was a little bit more of a spitfire. And, uh, you know, so, uh, I played a lot of softball. And, uh, you know, back then it was a big thing. I mean, the, in the open division of the Steel Valley Slow Pitch, we played about 150 games a year.
Oh, wow.
You know, so.
Five games a night?
Oh, well, no, no, no. We, we played five nights a week. We played double headers on Saturday and Sunday, you know? So we played tournaments out of town and, you know, and I used to grow a beard in the summertime. And I'd tell everybody, cause it made me feel mean. And, uh, and you, and you had to feel mean when you were playing ball because it was competitive. So I think that they just got my competitive nature with respect to, you know, drawing a challenge. And I will say that I think that the individual who said it uh, was one of the people that beat my father, uh, for trustee in the sixties. And, you know, and I think the challenge was put out there because he figured, you know, I beat your old man, I'll beat you too.
Yeah, you never messed with kids. Exactly, never messed with kids. So how long were you a trustee?
I, I was actually a trustee for 19 years. Um, I was, I was elected five, four years terms.
And what was some of the challenges that you faced over at, in Austintown?
Well, you, you know, I think that what you find in every, any position in government, that you think you have the ability and the authority and the money to do a lot more things than you really do. You know, you, you think you can come in and, and, you know, conquer the challenges, conquer the problems, help people. Uh, when government, you know, I was used to the private sector where time is money. Uh, and you're, you know, you're on budgets and you're, you know, in government, you, you know, I used to equate it to that, um, like, like in zoning, I used to fight with zoning, uh, our own zoning and say that, you know, zoning is a process that, that we have to ease the people through to show them how to get through that process. It's not an opportunity to put up a gauntlet and let people, you know, get smacked along the way. You know, you, you need to, you know, always be looking to make the process easier and less costly so that businesses can build, people can build, you can do the things you need to do and not expend as much money or as much time. Because, you know, I spent three years pounding nails at night to try and move into our house. And, you know, time is money. And when you've got a construction loan, the bank's, you know, breathing down your neck, you're spending money. So, you know, I looked at it from that perspective and the opportunity to, you know, to try and do things to help people go through the process. And, um, you know, and it's home, it's my community. Peoples' homes were flooding while we were fixing the problems. I mean, I, I went over and installed backflow valves in people's houses myself, you know, the screw-in kind, not the kind where you need to bust up the cement, but people, people that couldn't help themselves, you know? And I did everything I could. I, you know, I helped people cut the drywall off and, you know, and put new walls at the bottom 24 inches to, you know, help them eliminate sanitary backup smells. You know, I mean, you, you just feel a sense of responsibility, especially in an elected position, to try and do everything you can, whether it's the government's responsibility or not. Because when you, when you're going into a place where, you know, you have a senior citizen and they don't have family to help and they don't have money to do the things that, that need done, you know, you do whatever you can. And, you know, and I, I, um, I had the privilege of serving in Austintown, you know, being my home and how personal it was to me for a long time. And I, I think I did because, you know, people knew me and, you know, respected the, the fact that, you know, we worked hard on their behalf. And, you know, so, I mean, it was a passion for myself. And, you know, the, the thing is, is that, you know, remember, when you're, when you're a Township trustee, it's more community service than it is a political job because you're making about 50 cents an hour and you're working full-time as well. You know, it's not a full-time elected position, you know? And, and basically, you know, you're, you're, you're doing it to try and help the community you live in, you know, in any way, shape or form.
Yeah, and so we, we were serving Austintown. So then what is your next, what was your next step after that?
Well, I had the vision that being a trustee in Austintown and being a county commissioner was comparable. You know, the county commissioners do a lot of the similar things that the trustees do, but only on a county scale. You know, because I'd interacted with the trustees for a long time or the commissioners for a long time, you know, and trying to work on. We, we did a lot of enterprise zone developments, bringing businesses in, tax abatements, luring different companies in over the years. So I thought that, um, at the time that, uh, that it was similar to being a trustee. Well, I ran for, uh, county commissioner in 2000. Actually, I ran for county commissioner in 2004 and lost. I lost to Anthony Trafficani. Um, it was a vacant seat that was open and Anthony worked for Congressman Trafficant. And I worked, you know, Thomas Steel and I was a trustee in Austintown. And he and I both ran for the open seat and Anthony defeated me. So he became county commissioner and, and I remained trustee in 2005. And, um, you know, I, I, I didn't want to run against any incumbents. Uh, so I, I didn't run again for commissioner until 2013, uh, when, when John McNally left to become mayor and I ran for an open seat. So that was when I was elected, uh, county commissioner, uh, was in 2013.
Did you learn a lot from when you ran for the first time compared to the second time running?
Oh, yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's night and day, you know, running a campaign countywide. Um, you know, when you literally, you know, have to drive 45 minutes to get to the end of the county line, you know, when you're going Sebring and you're going to different areas. And, you know, so it's, it's a huge undertaking and a huge expense. You know, I mean, people spend close to a hundred thousand dollars in a county commissioner's race, you know? And, you know, it wasn't something that, you know, the average person could fund, you know? And, and a lot of people that are unknown, you know, it's difficult to raise enough money to be competitive. Um, so if everyone, you know, if you are all coming into that in a similar situation, you know, and you can, uh, move into that spot or run for that spot and on a level playing field, it makes it easier. Uh, and, you know, back in 2013, when I ran, um, a gentleman by the name of Buzz Pishker. He was, uh, one of the presidents of Mercy Health. Uh, and he was also, I think, the Chair of the Board of Aqua Ohio at one time. And so, I mean, it was a difficult race then too. Um, but I got elected in 2013 and, you know, I came in at the same time in the county as Jerry Green, Pat Ginetti, um, you know, they were all newly elected county, uh, office holders as well. We all came in together.
Yeah, and so, so what, when you first got, you got elected, what did it feel? Kind of what, what went through your mind like, hey, I won, now it's down to business?
Yeah, and well, really the, the thing that I, um, took the most solace from and the most rewarding, uh, from being a trustee in Austintown is you need to know how to work on a board of three cooperatively. And, um, I think I counted one time, there was seven or eight trustees that I worked with, different. Um, and, you know, you don't always have the same opinion. You don't always have the same thought process. Um, but what you need to do is draw from each person's background, their experience, and you need to optimize their strengths and complement their weaknesses, you know? And, um, I think that one thing that I learned was patience and to be able to work with people on a board of three. So, um, when I came into the county commissioner seat, um, it was a very tense board, uh, to say the least because, you know, there was always, not always, but there seemed to be factions. Um, Carol Rigetti came on board new when it had been, um, Dave Luton, Anthony Trafficani and John McNally. Well, Carol was kind of the new person. Uh, and then, uh, when McNally left, I was the new person. And, you know, the question was always, that was posed to me is, oh, who are you with? Are you with Carol or are you with Anthony? You know, and, and my response was always the same is what's the topic? You know, I'll tell you, I'll tell you my opinion on what, what topic you want to know about. And then you can ask them their opinion and see who aligns up where. You know, I'm, I'm not coming in aligned with a person. You know, I'm just coming in trying to do what's right for the largest percentage of county residents. And, you know, it's, and I always made sure that I tried to get everybody on the same page and working together. Uh, and I think that, that we've cooperation and, uh, and the harmony that we have working together. Uh, and I think that, that we've, cooperation and, uh, and the harmony that we have working together has existed for eight years. So, um, don't, don't get me wrong though, we disagree. And Carol and I probably yell at each other more than anybody. Um, but, you know, at the end of the day, you know, you walk out and you've agreed to disagree or you agree to agree. And, you know, so you, you move forward and, and in any-
Well, let me-
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Eh, let me, let me follow up with this. No, you're okay. Um, let me ask you this. So, maybe many people don't realize how budgets work for the county. That there's a general fund, there's police funds, county funds. Could you just explain which funds are, that work for the general fund and which ones are tax levy that you may see across the county? Just a little bit, so people understand how that works.
Yeah. And, and really, that's a great lead in because one of the things that was the most challenging for me is predominantly what the main responsibility of the county commissioners are is to, is to administer the budget. That's really the largest function and responsibility that the commissioners have. And when I got in office, the thing that had been taking place countywide is that there was an on-again, off-again voting of the sales tax. Because the sales tax was just categorized as a general fund, a general fund sales tax. But in the general fund was all the departments. You know, the treasurer, the auditor, the courts, the sheriff, the prosecutor. Everything was funded from the general fund. So, when that happens, then if you vote against the sales tax and it's defeated, well, the largest budgetary cost is the sheriff. Of all of the, of all the funds coming in, because it takes over twenty million dollars a year to operate the jail and the sheriff's department. So when I got in, the renewal was coming up of the half a percent sales tax. So, my, my thing that I learned in Austintown the most was, uh, from being a trustee is people don't want to vote on, do not want to vote on a general fund tax. Because they think you're just going to pass out raises to people and they don't really know what that's going to fund. So, my thought process was, we have to treat it like we do in the township. In the township, we had a road levy, a police levy, a fire levy. Everybody knew exactly where the money was coming from. So Jerry Green and I sat down and I gave him my thought process on that. And I said, I want to do a specific sales tax that only funds the sheriff's department so that we can make sure that your funding stream has a permanent funding stream that's not going to be interrupted by any other budgetary constraints. So, obviously Jerry Green was all in favor of it because the sheriff's department, you know, their people have been losing benefits, losing salaries, losing, uh, deputies. And they had, they had faced many, many cuts prior to me coming on board in two thousand and thirteen, twenty thirteen. So, we came back and sat down as a board, Jerry, Anthony, Carol, Audrey, myself. And, you know, we said, you know, how much does a half a percent generate? You know, well, you know, we're looking at X amount of dollars. How much does three-quarters of one percent generate? Well, we're looking at X amount of dollars. Well, so it's not, it's, it's, um, too mu, or not enough for the half a percent sales tax, but too much for the three-quarter. So, we need to fund justice. What can we put in justice? You know, let's, nine-one-one comes along with the first responders, the sheriff's department, the prosecutor. So, that was how we categorized it along with the coroner. Uh, and we said, this is going to be, this is what the justice fund is only permitted to fund. You know, so we went on the ballot, uh, with the justice fund, uh, identifying those specific departments that this three-quarters of one percent will directly have their money allocated to by law. And it was, it was passed, uh, and renewed, uh, a year and a half, two years ago. And, you know, and it's been in place, uh, since two thousand and fourteen, since the year after I got there. And, you know, I'm, I'm probably the most proud of that because, you know, we tried, we simplified it. You know, like, like we do in township government. You know, township government, I still believe is the, is the most direct representation for the people in any form of government. Uh, you have trustees that, you know, make, there's, there's, you know, thirteen hundred township, townships in the state of Ohio. You know, and you've got trustees that make fifteen hundred bucks a year. And, but they're doing it for the love of the community and they have their finger on the pulse of what the different communities need. Uh, just like the city councilmen do. And, you know, so it's, it's a, it's a great form of government. It's, it's representative and I tried to, you know, bring that feel to the commissioner's office so that we could fund things that people knew what they specifically were by law going to, uh, going to service, you know. So, uh, the justice tax has proven to be, you know, a, a good thing for everybody because it's kept our county safe and funded.
And it's been separated out of the general fu, general fund, which is, is good.
And, and, uh, in the general fund, there's one-half of one percent. And that funds the, the courts, all the common police courts. You know, the treasurer, the auditor, the recorder, the clerk of courts. Um, so, uh, you know, the green team, the facilities department, the, um, purchasing, you know, all of the ancillary, uh, departments-
A whole big, right.
-go into that. And what people don't realize is, you know, we collect seven and a quarter percent sales tax in Mahoning County. And five and three-quarter percent goes to the state of Ohio. They take, you know, almost all of the funding from the sales tax. Uh, the county gets one and one-quarter, three-quarter in the justice fund and one-half for all the rest of the county. And then one-quarter of one percent for WRTA.
Well, that's, that's, I don't think people realize that, that maybe they know that over five percent of the normal sales tax that you go out to eat or buy something, that that goes straight to the state and not the county.
Right. And then the state of Ohio charges you a fee of one percent to take your money because they do, they charge you an administrative fee to take your money.
You always gotta love that, you gotta, you gotta love that administrative fee. Now, let me, let's, now let's fast forward, March twenty twenty, the start of the pandemic. We're now in October, almost two weeks from election. How has Mahoning County handled the pandemic? What are some of the things that you guys are doing behind the scenes? Budget-wise, has, has, uh, has your budget hurt because of COVID? Kind of explain what's been happening behind the scenes during the pandemic.
One of the, um, one of the things that, that I'm very proud of our board for doing is, you know, we, uh, ten years ago, the county was borrowing money to pay their healthcare bill. And, you know, and I used to tell them when I got there that that, you know, that's ridiculous. It's like paying your electric bill with your MasterCard. You know, you, you've got to get out of that, that rut. Uh, so we literally took and we put all of our, um, casino dollars that were, that were given to us by the state into a stabilization reserve, you know, sort of like the state did, you know, with their rainy day fund. And so we created the stabilization because we were going year to year with no money carryover or very little. Uh, it's not good count, accounting practices and, you know, it's not a good thing because, you know, too many of us, you know, uh, and a lot of us, you know, we live from payday to payday and if there's, you know, an interruption, you know, it's difficult to move forward, to continue to pay your rent, your utilities, your food. Um, like so many of us are stuck with today. Uh, and so what we tried to do is make sure that we weren't putting people in a situation like that, uh, with not providing services. So, coming into this year, uh, from nineteen into twenty, because we had a great bond rating from Standard and Poor's, because of our conservative spending nature, because of our, our reserves and our balance budget, we had a fourteen million dollar carryover going into this year in the general fund to be able to accommodate the start of the pandemic. You know, we obviously didn't foresee a pandemic, but from a financial standpoint, from a financial standpoint, we were prepared. You know, so, uh, we were able to keep all of the offices open and operating. You know, not at the normal pace, but to be able to service people in need. So, um, you know, we, jobs and family services remained open. You know, the clerk of courts, all of the different, uh, entities that you and I would need. You know, it was changed on how it was open, but it was open and able to be utilized. So, um, we continued to do that. Uh, we continued to look for ways to help the county residents as well as the small businesses that were impacted. Um, the bad thing is, is that, you know, uh, we, we formed our task force, um, with EMA in charge and the two health departments. Uh, the EMA director, Dennis O'Hara, Aaron Bishop, the health, uh, director from the Board of Health in Youngstown and Ryan Teacack, the Board of Health Director in the county. So the three of them chaired the committee, uh, of which I was part of as the chair of our board. Uh, and many, many, many people, uh, predominantly were, uh, people in leadership positions, fire chiefs, uh, Pitser, Frost, Hutchinson, um, you know, uh, uh, Brown, uh, the, uh, there were, there were so many people, uh, that were part of our group and our committee, uh, that, that took charge of different, uh, different necessities like PPE. Uh, like, you know, making sure we had an overflow place for people, uh, if we ran out of beds. Uh, you know, the, uh, we put out seven hundred and fifty, uh, thousand pieces of PPE, you know, through the county. Uh, we worked with businesses, uh, like Dinosaur Plastics that made face shields. Thirty-five thousand face shields he made, uh, Bob Hendricks and Dinosaur Plastics and gave them to Mahoning, Trumbull, Columbiana Counties when there was no, uh, masks to be had anywhere in the U.S. Um, you know, so throughout that process, working with the governor, working with the Board of Health and our task force, uh, trying to administer the PPE, the food drives, everything that, that this brought about with it, um, was, uh, just a day and night undertaking. Uh, conference calls every morning at eight, every, every afternoon at four, uh, updates day and night. Um, governor every week. You know, I mean, it, it was, it was, uh, uh, something that, uh, I've never seen anything like it before. Um, fortunately, a lot of people that are in, uh, safety forces, uh, you know, like our sheriff's department and our local fire departments, uh, they, they're used to handling disasters. Um, but this was one that no one could see. You know, it wasn't like, you know, we had a flood, let's clean up the flood. We had a fire, we had a hur, earthquake, you know, a tornado. You know, it wasn't like those, you know, that we were fighting, you know, something you couldn't see. And, you know, so that there is, it was so different than anything that anyone had ever experienced. It was, um, it was a learning experience throughout the whole process, uh, something that, I'm very proud of the people that participated, uh, both in our staff, in our office and on the task force. Um, so, you know, we, we got through the, the lion's share of that. Well, then when the federal government decided to take and provide, uh, CARES dollars, you know, once again, here's where they go and they only fund counties that have excess of five hundred thousand people. Well, in the state of Ohio, there's only five, you know, and-
And we probably missed that threshold.
Yeah, by half. So-
Yeah.
Then the, in the, in the whole United States, only five percent of all the counties in the United States have in excess of five hundred thousand people.
So who makes that rule? That's serious.
Yeah, isn't that crazy? They were the only ones directly funded through the CARES Act from the federal government.
Well, and, and let's talk now, let's move ahead. We're now in October, okay? What, we've been through it, I think everyone has seen what has been done with CARES Act money, with PPE and a variety of different stuff. What are your plans now moving forward with the county and the goals of the county in general, moving forward?
Well, um, it's, that's interesting because, you know, we've, right now, you know, uh, first and foremost, you know, we've got to, we've got to continue with the process right now because, you know, if you look at the numbers, you know, let's not lose sight of the fact on the COVID end of it. You know, and I'll, I'll give you some numbers that we just got this morning from Ryan Teacack. We had him, uh, give us an overview. In August, uh, when we were pretty much at our peak, you know, there were four hundred and sixty-six positive cases in Mahoning County that was fifteen a day. We had, um, and, uh, two deaths in August. In September, we had, or no, uh, eleven deaths in August. In September, we had two hundred and eighty-nine cases, that was nine a day and we had two deaths. Now in October, we're at five hundred and fourteen year-to-date and our month is only two-thirds of the way done. That's twenty-five a day. And we've already had two deaths. So, right now, you know, the focus needs to be, to make sure that we're, you know, doing the things that we're advised to do. We're, you know, we're, we're getting lax and sloppy with our masks. Um, you know, we're starting to go back indoors because it's getting cold and we're gathering and we're not, you know, social distancing, you know. So we need to focus on those things so we can move forward. Um, so that's still a large task that we face as a county. Um, right now, in, in October, you know, we've been able to secure money from the state that, that has been trickled down from the CARES Act from the federal government that the state has allocated. You know, and, and our, what our, what our, um, focus right now is, is we've provided, uh, two-point-five million dollars to small businesses, seventy-five, or ten thousand dollars each. Um, we've did over a hundred and fifty businesses so far for them to be able to keep, you know, paying their bills and paying people. Uh, small businesses meaning less than fifty people, less than a million dollars in gross sales. So, we have, uh, we've allocated another million and a half into that fund of which we have already more than fifty applicants trying to get that ten thousand dollar funding. Uh, we, we just put a million and a half into a fund, uh, for, for people in Mahoning County to apply for, for, um, rent and, and mortgage assistance and for utility assistance, up to five thousand dollars per family. So, that program is being run by Catholic charities and MyCap. The funding of the, uh, ten thousand for small businesses is being run by the old Med备, uh, Valley Partners. Uh, it's called now. So they're the ones getting the, the, uh, money to the people, you know, going through the filing applications. So, the people that, that have the connections to the community at the ground level are assisting us in every way, shape or form, like the United Way. Uh, they're handling the food drives, we're funding the United Way for the food drives. Um, we put, uh, two hundred thousand dollars into the, uh, FOP for Mahoning County, which is collectively brought on board all of the FOPs in the county. Um, the FOP I meant for the deputy sheriffs, they brought all the FOPs on board for the whole county. And they're going out with the two hundred thousand dollars to provide, uh, money for the most needy families in each of their communities for Christmas time. You know, for food, for Thanksgiving, for Christmas. Um, we're doing food drives, we're doing utilities, you know, we're, we've got, uh, the company out of, um, I think I had a pamphlet here somewhere, but the company out of, here it is, Springfield Township, Personal Protected.
We bought some stuff from them at YU, so.
They, they, they brought and, and started making the hand washing stations. Well, we gave them through the CARES dollars, through the state, we gave them three hundred thousand dollars. Or no, we didn't give them three hundred thousand dollars, we purchased three hundred thousand dollars worth of the hand washing stations and gave one to every school district in Mahoning County. Um, so, you know, we're, we're trying to find the needs, the people, the opportunities, the food drives. Because, you know- the food drives, because, you know, it's, it's really all about making sure that the people that are living here in our county, that our neighbors and our friends and, and our, and our residents, we have 235,000 people in Mahoning County, and I can tell you the, the majority of them are of retirement age. You know, we're an aging county and.
Top 10 in the country for retirement area.
Wow. I didn't even know that. That's, that's amazing.
That was done, that was probably done maybe four or five years ago. Um, I, I was reading an article and they said the Youngstown Warren Regional Area was one in the top 10 in retirement against Florida, against Arizona. That's why we have a lot of different older generations here that you may not see normally.
Wow. That's, that's interesting because, you know, and, and, you know, so it's all about making sure that every faction of the county people are taken care of. You know, we partnered with the area on aging and created the senior levy that the people voted on and we've been able to service 20,000 seniors to help them stay in their homes, you know, help them by building ramps or grab bars or putting showers in or tubs in their homes, uh, providing assistance to be able to provide meals, uh, to people that are shut-ins that, that have the ability to stay in their homes. Um, because at the same time that that's happening, the state of Ohio is shutting down the Youngstown Developmental Center, you know, where we have people in need for special needs for disabilities. So at the same time, we purchased that facility from the state of Ohio, took it over and have partnered with Easter Seals, Compass, Meridian Services, Alta, Flying High, you know, to provide wraparound services, uh, in that facility, 46 acres, 100,000 square feet under roof for 10 buildings, uh, to be able to reopen. Uh, we anticipate there'll be 400 to 500 people serviced a day, uh, there with as many as 250 employees working there a day. So we just had the ribbon cutting in October for that, uh, for the grand opening. That's going on, the senior levy is going on, um, new development, what we're looking at, you know, to move forward, not only for, um, you know, to bring new business, but to open up the corridors, uh, that bring new business. We've got a $20 million sanitary sewer project going from New Middletown to Boardman to reconfigure the entire sanitary sewer district there, because right now there's been a moratorium for 10 years on that area to be able to develop. So once that's, uh, sanitary project's finished, it'll open up Beaver Township, Springfield Township, Poland Township, that whole corridor, uh, we're working with Genetti to widen to, uh, Western Reserve Road. So you'll have that entire end of the county opened up for business opportunity, new development, new businesses coming in. So, you know, that's a huge undertaking that we've been working on for quite a while that's finally come into fruition. Um, we've been able to create some innovative ways, uh, with, with creative, uh, different opportunities. Uh, we did a TID, which is a transportation improvement district in North Jackson that they gave us $250,000 grant from the state for us to identify, uh, the movement and the transportation end of it, to be able to expand with the Amazon and the FedEx and the, uh, Mom's Meals and Pure Foods and those, those entities that are in North Jackson. Uh, the Beaver Township will open up, it's got an interstate 680, you know, it's, uh, you know, the, the whole key is people talk about, um, businesses and they're in Trumbull County or they're going here, going there, but, you know, you have to look at things from a regional standpoint. You know, we have the Port Authority that's Trumbull and Mahoning County combined. The six county commissioners from the two counties are, sit on the board there and select the representatives of the Port Authority. So they're our economic development arm. They do both Trumbull and Mahoning County on behalf of both entities. So entities like Lordstown and, you know, um, uh, the LG Chem and, and those large facilities, uh, that are coming onboard are coming to where the infrastructure is the, is the best. You know, we, we have the best transportation area, not only between Cleveland and Pittsburgh, but between Chicago and New York. You know, the interchange in Austintown, the interchange in Lordstown, the interchange in Beaver Township, that's going to blow, you know, expand wide open. Um, those are the, those are where the business expands because of the opportunity for transportation districts. So, um, there's, there's a lot of business expanding there. We, we've averaged over the last eight years, almost $250 million in new construction annually in just Mahoning County. You know, not even counting the regional, regionalized area that we've had so much, you know, probably quadrupled that development.
Got a lot going on in such a short period of time and, and a, and a lot going on in the future as well, because those are a lot of projects. Let me ask, uh, let me follow up. Has COVID held up some of those projects?
Oh, big time, big time. You know, the, the Myers developments, you know, Boardman in Austintown, Austintown should have been done by now. It's still on the drawing board to be completed next year. Um, a lot of them have, have, you know, pulled back, uh, on their construction because, you know, what, right now, with all of the companies scaled back because of COVID, you know, the, the opportunity to secure the resources needed to, for, to build are very scarce. You know, there's a shortage of steel, there's a shortage of lumber, there's a shortage of a lot of the raw materials necessary for the construction end of a lot of businesses that are already on the drawing board and anticipated to be completed at this point in time.
Yeah. Okay, I appreciate that. Let me, so now I'm going to do a, a quick question shoot at you. So, okay, best, best accomplishment in Austintown and the county?
Um, in Austintown, obviously, um, curing the flooding problems. I won't say curing, but, uh, pretty much, uh, alleviating the largest areas, uh, where the most people were impacted. Uh, and it took, it took, you know, and my, and my dad Charles Ditzler's plan, um, about 10 years and, you know, to impact the, the large areas. Uh, and the benefit that has come to the Austintown residents is, you know, when we formed the ABC, uh, Water District, uh, Austintown Boardman, Canfield, when I was a trustee, uh, when we formed that district, um, today, when I have been in the county, the, uh, Boardman in Canfield voted to impose a stormwater tax to help their flooding problems, but Austintown didn't because we didn't have the impact of the flooding issues still happening today. So I'd like to believe I helped, you know, eliminate the opportunity for more taxes to be put on the Austintown residents by focusing on the flooding problems in Austintown when I was there.
And what about in the county?
And in the county, I think the, the best thing is the justice tax. Um, because when I got to the county, you know, my thought process was, is that, you know, people always do the right thing on behalf of their neighbors, the residents and their community, but they have to believe the government's going to be transparent and do the things they say they're going to do. You know, so you got to create that trust with the residents and you've got to do what you say you're going to do. And the transparency we created by forming a tax that only went to justice and guaranteeing funding to the sheriffs, the deputy sheriff's law enforcement, the prosecutor, 911, the coroner, you know, and, and that being embraced and re, renewed twice, um, shows that, you know, that it's working because, you know, we all want our neighborhood safe and we all want to be able to, uh, you know, make sure that there's some, not somebody breaking into our homes. So I think that, that from the county standpoint, I'm the most proud of.
Okay, that was best accomplishment. Now best memory in both the county, and this will be my last question, the best memory in the county and in Austintown while in office so far?
Um.
I make you think on these questions, don't I?
Yeah, yeah. Um, probably, um, the, the best memory is, is the same memory two different times. Um, and probably my best memory was, um, in, in the township was in, uh, November of 1993, when I got elected, uh, and was able to get sworn in, uh, and, uh, have my mother and my wife with me and know that my father had tried to achieve that. And, you know, it was two years too late for him to see me, uh, get elected trustee, but I know he was there. So that was probably my best memory, uh, as a trustee, um, getting sworn in and, uh, knowing that, that I did it on behalf of my father. And, um, my best memory is, uh, as a county commissioner was probably, um, my mother, um, and my wife being there in the courthouse, um, when, uh, you know, when I, when I took office and be sworn in and have, you know, my mother and, and, and actually I, I want to say that it was really at the BNO station, uh, when the results came in and we were all gathered there and literally the photo is my mother and my wife and myself on the front page of the vindicator, uh, after we won in 2013 for, uh, county commissioner and.
And that's probably framed somewhere.
Yeah, it actually is. It's, it's framed, uh, in, in the office and in my county commissioner's office. So, um, you know, those are things because, you know, they, when, when you're elected, whether it's just at the township level or the county level, it's all a family affair. Because if your family doesn't have buy-in, you know, it's going to be a miserable life, you know, because you, you were, uh, an elected official day and night, whether it's part-time as a township trustee or as a full-time county commissioner, you're elected 24/7. You know, when it starts to rain, you know, and, and they're calling for flood warnings, you know, I'm in my truck driving around the county, you know, looking to see where the problems are. You know, even though, um, you know, each individual political subdivision handles most of their problems, you know, I'm out there trying to see where they're at and make sure that when we're allocating community development block grant monies, that we're doing it for Boardman and for Canfield and for Youngstown, for the areas that have flooded in Poland and, you know, and, and like the commissioners did on behalf of Austintown when I was a trustee, you know, I want to make sure that, that, you know, we're at the ground level and we're communicating with the, with the local political subdivisions, uh, and knowing their needs, seeing their problems and trying to help them. So, well, it's kind of a roundabout way, but, you know, it's, it's all about, uh, family and, you know, trying to make sure that you treat everyone you represent like family so that you're doing what their needs are as well.
Isn't it the norm, the norm that it's happy wife, happy life?
Yeah, well, you know, it's, it's, um, it's definitely a true statement.
Dave, it's always a pleasure. I thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule. You're always welcome on my show.
Tony, you're a good man and you do a nice job and, you know, the, uh, the, the Hope Foundation and what you do for kids and what you do for our valley. Um, you know, I, I miss being part of it this year, um, you know, and like we've missed so many different things. You've done so much good for so many, uh, you're a good person, you're a good man and you're a good community representative and, uh, and now you're a good husband. You know, your wife tells me you're a good husband, so.
Well, I hope I always want to do that. I hope you, I hope that's true. I'm going to have to talk to her about that when you last talked to her, but thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. Check out anthonyvspano.com for more podcasts, interviews and videos. God bless and have a great night, everyone. Stay safe.
You too. Thank you.